I know, right? Nobody's not supposed to be in here.
Can't reach him.
I said, no!
Call me into order. Roll call please.
Hargette?
Here.
Levin?
Here.
Marbella?
Here.
McCarthy?
Here.
White?
Here.
Whitmore?
Here.
Bruno?
Here.
Please stand for tonight's invocation and pledge. Invocation, I will lead you in prayer. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we adore you, we bless you, and we glorify you. We thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed upon us. We ask you, dear Lord, to look favorably upon our meeting this night. Help us to discern the needs of our community. Give us the strength and the courage to debate our concerns and issues in a peaceful and caring manner. Guide us in our deliberations and make them beneficial to all those you have entrusted in our care. May all our works give you honor and our lives proclaim your goodness. We ask this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item under through the previous meeting minutes. Number one, I need a motion to approve the July 2nd, 2019 regular board meeting minutes. Second.
Sir.
Any discussion on that? Roll call please.
Hargette?
Aye.
Levin? Marbella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. Move on to number two. I need a motion to approve the July 16th, 2019 committee of a whole meeting minutes. So move. Aggravation?
Aye.
Motion second. Any discussion on that? Roll call please.
Hargette?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Marbella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
And aye. Motion carried. We move on to number three. July 16th, I need a motion to approve the July 16th, 2019 regular board meeting minutes. So move. Second. Any discussion on meeting minutes? Roll call please.
Hargette?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Marbella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to old business. There is none. We move on to village administrators' report.
Mr. Mayor members of board, in packages the village administrators report for July 20th. Inclusive in that report, just some highlights to touch on. We had the IDNR meeting in July with the delegation from the director's office, Senator Bush as well as State Representative Mason. I'll defer further discussion on that to yourself and trustee Hargette or attorney long. We're also in attendance. From a funding perspective, I've had communication with State Representative's office and the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity about $14,000 grant we received for the public works building. They are in the process of putting together the language for the notice of funding opportunity, which will be posted and will be notified when that happens. In addition, the mayor notified me today that he received written communication from Senator Bush's office saying that through, she received an estimate through the governor's office that the village of Winter Harbor will be receiving an additional $266,595 for roads, to be directed towards roads. The committee of the whole, the board has agreed to do a committee of the whole meeting on a week from today, on July 13th, to begin discussion.
I guess I've lost the mo.
Yeah, I hate when I lose a mo. So, on August 13th, to discuss the cannabis regulation and tax act that was signed by the governor earlier this year and how the board and, how the board members decide to proceed with that. Wage and compensation studies still moving forward. I met with the village of Buffalo Grove last week to discuss acquiring some data as to public sector wages and compensations so we can do an analysis of that. The budget's being reformatted. I think I had some discussions with trustee Levin and trustee Weiss, as well as yourself, mayor, and the format and the information that's going to be available to the public, including a five-year history on our budget. Budget reliance will be of benefit to everybody. And then finally, trustee Marbella had given me some information about cleanup at Lake Michigan. I've reached out to Congressman Schneider's office to talk to them about landfill and other things. And they're meeting with me again next week to talk about Lake Michigan cleanup and erosion. So, that's all I have right now, Mr. Mayor members of board.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions for Greg? Very good. Thank you. We'll move on to mayor's report. The first item, I need a motion to allow Winter Harbor Lions Club requesting permission to solicit donations by handing out candy on the following corners. Lewis Avenue and Russell Road, Sheridan Road and Ninth Street, and Kenosha Road and Ninth Street on Friday, September 20th from 3:00 to 6:30 p.m. And Saturday, September 21st, from 8:30 a.m. to 11:00.
So move. Second.
Any discussion on that? Okay, roll call.
Hargette?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Marbella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. Move on to the second item. I need a motion for an appointment resolution. All right. I need a motion to adopt resolution appointing David McClary as a plumbing inspector as presented. Need a motion for that.
So move. Second.
Okay, now David McClary, we're bringing him on because our plumbing inspector is Ben Franklin. And Ben Franklin is a resident and Ben Franklin is a very active plumber in town. And you've got to have somebody on board to do his inspections because he can't do his own. So, this is Dave McClary is going to be part-time. He's going to be basically a backup. And he's going to get paid the same amount the plumbing inspector gets, $40 per inspection. Any other questions on that?
No, that's good for vacations and all. I know there's no.
Yes, he's very, very good. He's not an active plumber or inspector. He doesn't do work anymore. I think he just does inspections.
Yeah, he's Zion's inspector.
Exactly. All right. I need a roll call.
Hargette?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Marbella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to the next item. I need a motion to adopt appointment resolution appointing Raymond Hamilton, part-time police officer.
So move. Second.
Discussion. I believe according to Chief Joe Bromick, we have a shortage of part-time police officers and we need to hire someone. Correct me if I'm wrong, chief.
Yeah, Ben, and Hamilton is retired recently from the Chicago Police Department. He was lieutenant for SWAT team. He's also a yours doctor and he's going to help us with formulation of use of force policies as well as doing training.
And it works in patrol. Excellent.
Known him for years. He's a quality guy.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Any discussion on that? Roll call please.
Hargette?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Marbella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to the next item. Eagle Scout Brennan G. Heinie, service project proposal. Brennan, would you like to come and address the board? Make your mind, tell me a little bit about what this is, because you'll have to.
Would you like to move the agenda?
I'm sorry?
Would you like to move the agenda?
No, you can.
So first of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Brennan and our village trustees for allowing me to present my Eagle Scout project to you guys. My name is Brennan Heinie and I am a member of Troop 667 out in private Illinois. And I'm here tonight to present to you my proposal Eagle Scout project for you guys' approval. My project is to provide electricity to the Hindy Pavilion in 38 acres, which was my brother's Eagle Scout project back in 2016. It would include all work and material needed to provide the electrical outlets and LED lights in the pavilion. I reviewed my project ideas with Scott Fuller and he agreed with my plans and suggested that I bring it to the village board to get approval. I asked Mr. John Hucker from Hucker Electric for assistance in initial planning phase. We would be trenching to electrical box to north east of the pavilion to obtain power and electrical source. This box provides power to a lift station. I spoke with Superintendent Tim Regarder yesterday from Public Works about using the panel. How could electrical be used for this part of the face? I will also contact Julie to check for underground cables or re-trench. This is Tom Osborne from Osborne Electric. We're providing assistance in insulation and connection of all outlets and LED lights for this project. In the package that you should have in front of you, it says the names of the pavilion, Trent Hindy Pavilion. On the second picture, it's the overall layout of the pavilion facing 44 and R. The third picture is the electrical stub that will be tapping out of everyone's foot down and a foot out from the concrete pad. That's where we'll run the wires to and trench from the stub to the electrical source. Fourth and fifth picture is a hose supply box. The fifth picture is just a zoomed in version, a closer version, where it would be trenching to and tapping into the power box there. The sixth picture is the northwest post of, northwest outpost of the pavilion. That's where one of the outlets will be at. The seventh picture is the northeast post and that's where the second outlet will be at. And mentioned that outlet should be about high level, head level, or maybe that kids are not going to use it as well to climb on to get in on our after stuff. The eighth picture is the south, the south end of the picture of the pavilion. And that is where one of the LED lights is going to be at, located. And the ninth picture is the north light where the north LED light will be pictured up. Mount that. And we're going to mount it in the rafters but lower downstairs. It's going to provide more light, but it'll also be higher up where kids are less likely to be can't remember the light. Following your approval of my project, I'll work with the village electrical inspector to review our proposal and obtain the required permits to begin the project. I'll also, I'll work with Scott Fuller and scheduling all workday to work on my project. Your assistance and waving any current fees on this project would be greatly appreciated. I will be presenting my project to local civic organizations, including Kiwanis, Rotary, Lions, and the Department of the F W. Taking their assistance and raising the $8,500 in funding to revive for this improvement for the pavilion. I'll also be working with local businesses and fundraising projects to assist in funding. I appreciate your time this evening and grateful for being allowed to present my Eagle Scout project in front of you and I will answer any questions that you guys have.
Two outlets and two lights.
Correct. Two outlets and two lights.
Now, how far do you have to trench?
About 200 to 250 feet.
Are you using PVC?
We're going to use cordot piping. And we're going to trench there. We're going to, I'm going to contact Mr. Tim Regarder. Any leftover piping ideas?
I might have, I might go over PVC pipe. I have some.
Greg, anything you need from us? Besides improving it and. I mean, we can't do that with the seed.
Yeah.
Would you like us to come out and help you?
Um.
Sure.
No, um, if you guys, if you guys feel free to come out during any of the workdays you want to come watch or whatever and see, take pictures of improvements of the pavilion, whatever you do.
Do you have a timeline? Yeah.
My timeline is, I would like, prefer to give this actual building and install all of this improvement and stuff. By the end of September, mid-October, early, really better for me because I age out in November. November 16th if I have to be given up.
You'll be 18 on November 16th.
Yes, that's fine. So, it's kind of, I'm a threshold of where I should, I should have started earlier, but I figure that this project should have been done, what should be done. And I would like to improve the pavilion and to help attract people to use the pavilion and to the city with purpose.
That's a great idea.
Yes, it is.
Great. Thank you, Brennan.
And may I go back to my cell meeting now?
Yes.
May I please the excuse, go, return to my.
Yes, you may, Brennan.
You have remarkable poise for a young man to speak in public.
Thank you, Greg.
Well, you've done all the merit badges, so communication is wonderful. Greg, thank you. Give me the information on the Rotary, I mean, whatever you want to present to Rotary.
You guys, are you guys going to be showing me not doing the sweeter?
Okay.
Are you letting the Rotary Club just put something out there on the sweeter?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Young man, don't try to buy a backup.
All right, we'll move on to courts correspondence. All right, move on to new business, committee reports, community development, trustee Hargette.
We're going to table this item. We received an update from the consultant today that was emailed out. All of you should have that with their latest report. So I wanted to give time for everyone to review that before we vote next meeting.
Very well. We table that out. We move on to finance, trustee Weiss.
Thank you. I make a motion that we approve accounts payable for 2019-6 in the amount of $242,827.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Hargette?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Marbella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I make a motion that we approve May treasurer's report.
Any discussion on the treasurer's report remaining? Roll call.
Hargette?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Marbella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Make a motion that we approve June treasurer's report.
Discussion on the June treasurer's report. Roll call please.
Hargette?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Marbella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And I make a motion for approval that the administrator to complete transaction for the land parcel 04-10-113-001. That's the pin number for the property that we bid on.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Just look at property over on Seventh Street.
Seven Lane, yes, sir.
Seven Lane. Just getting over there. All right, any discussion on that? Okay, roll call please.
Hargette?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Marbella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to police department, trustee McCarthy.
Make a motion to approve and accept the grant award from the state of Illinois for the 2019-2020 traffic safety program.
Second. Discussion on that? Roll call.
Hargette?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Marbella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And make a motion to approve contract with F S F Technologies for connection of the Winter Harbor Village All Complex Fire Alarm Panel to the Monde Laine dispatch center.
May I second that? All right, second. Any discussion on that? Did we ever incorporate ours, Albius, with this?
To the public.
Our fire alarm panel, yeah?
The, that, I was, I was going to bring that up. We end up, we end up relieving ourselves of the cost of monitoring by going through the 911 center with this consolidation. As I was going through the warrants, I was noticing that Public Works and other agencies or other buildings also are doing E D Fs. So I'm going to, I'm exploring that right now, that we're going to take it all and put it on there. We still had maintenance issues, but the monitoring, we would save the cost on the monitoring.
Very good. Any discussion on that? Roll call.
Hargette?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Marbella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to public hearings, which is asked to provide us with your name and evidence. I know why you're saying that, but I'm going to talk to you today.
Do what?
I say, I know why you're saying that, but I'm going to talk to you today.
Freechville, Representative BFW 2121, Street Department 10. For the reason I'm here tonight, the mayor called me and I just want to make a clear to everybody. The lights out there at the memorial are being worked on. Scott, don't make two lights. The holdup right now is the plumber. The plumber is working 10, 12 hours a day. He wants to do this one. The way he's working right now, I got to wait on him.
You mean electrician?
No, electrician. He's working 10, 12 hours a day.
I thought you were putting fire protection system in there.
I'm sorry. But anyway, that's where we're standing. I know it was on Facebook. I just talked to the young lady here. And I hope, I wish this woman would contact me. I told people, give her my telephone number. Leave her talk to me because I'm the one that's for this village board. That we had that memorial out there. It was something that I started years ago. It was one of the founders of it. And it's a very dear thing to me, just like the BFWs.
And I talked to you and then I called her.
Well, she called me.
I told her too, but she got her, she had her answers for this. I appreciate you letting me know. I didn't realize we were almost there. Are you waiting?
Yeah, I'm just waiting on the man. When he has the time, he'll be out there. In fact, tomorrow I'd like to pick up the lights bigger than the BFW. He'll just come by, pick up everything I have, the poles and everything because they're not going to be on ground. They're going up on a pole. I know we have cameras coming out there on the memorial. Hopefully this will stop. No henchmen, they've had to demand the lights.
Yeah. Well, they're up on the lights, they're up on the pole, you know.
Mayor. I'm seeing stuff. I don't think there's enough other places. No matter what you do, if somebody wants to do it, they're going to do it. The other thing I came to the village tonight, which you didn't know about this, mayor, is I'm inviting on Saturday, all trustees and mayor, these are all invited to the family's building, starting at 4 o'clock to be able to, now, see, see if that's, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is this Saturday at 4 o'clock?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I'll be there.
I just want to make a point about the post on Facebook this morning about that light. Within three minutes, myself and another resident, we're ready to come here tonight and go, here's the money, here are the people that will do it, what do we have to do? I was 20 minutes from coming to speak to Julie and say, how do we get on the agenda tonight to get this done?
It'll be done.
Because of a post on Facebook from what I feel is an instigator. Because after she found out the two people were jumping on it, oh, I've talked to everybody and everything's fine. She could have put that out there first. She put it out there second. So rest assured that what we see on social media or we talk about in our businesses, we pay attention to it. We may not always respond, but when we do, you guys are going to know. We're going to know about it.
Well, Jane, my wife pointed it out on Facebook. I don't look at Facebook that much. She can. When she puts her phone in front of my face. I thought, want me to do something about this? But thank you, Jane.
Mark Johnson, 214 Danbury Cove, you probably know why I'm here, but we didn't talk to him.
No, as I do.
Yes.
I don't know the status of this.
Yeah, and that's what I'm kind of here to find out. It's really well into our fourth year now with no maintenance on the covenant court ponds. And the only activity I've seen other than grass cutting is people being sent over to come through my yard and do bids on the property. So, I'm wondering what the status is and what's happening because we haven't had air raiders now in four years.
Yeah, I haven't talked to Mr. McCarthy, but he did tell me he's got $10,000 in the, in his account now. So he's working on it, but I don't know. Have you heard anything from him?
Yeah, the homeowners association has been reformed and they collect this money and they're ready to do their work. There are two property owners that fenced off the only way into the pond from their side, from English Lane. And they don't, those property owners have been requested to allow access through it. They don't want to do that. We red-tagged them and warned them that they had to allow access through this. Now, that resulted in them becoming really, really irate that they think that they're, that the village has no power or whatever to enforce the covenants that are written into the flat. So, rather than get into a long legal battle on it, we've gone down to enough that as of about two weeks ago, they were all meeting once more with the HOA and were going to work out an access agreement that the homeowners association would be able to go through their property to get back there and perform the necessary maintenance. That's the last I heard, was about two weeks ago. And it's, you know, you can figure out who the property owners are. I can't get into that.
My name?
Yeah, that's exactly right. Okay. So really, no, no update? We are working on it as much as we can. We have done as much as the law allows at this point in time without going to the, you know, the next step. If they, if they refuse to cooperate is what we started with, which was where the property would have to be to declare the property a nuisance and then follow suit. Okay, thank you.
I will talk to Mr. McCarthy and either have him call you or I'll find out where he's at and I'll call you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Evening.
Hello, Douglas Mills, 1140 Park Avenue. We have a problem with fences directed across the alleyway, buddy up to the back of our property. And I'd like access to that because we have a dying tree at the end of the property and it's going to take a lift to cut it down. There's a chain link fence that, you know, blocks, block it and then also the, um,
That's familiar with that. Anybody, Tim, are you familiar with this?
Yeah, I talked to Tim about it and he said if he needed to get through there, he would, he has the problem to tear it down.
Okay.
I also reached out to Rob Marbella and, you know, I've never heard anything back from him. Last week I called Officer Sheedy out there and the C S O Simmons. They told me to come to a meeting and, you know. But Officer Sheedy said there's not only two people that are doing this, you know, that are using alley property as their own personal property. It's, I guess, six residents down that 1100 block. So, I don't care about all of them. I just need access from 12th Street over to my property.
Now, this tree is in the alleyway, correct?
It's on my property, but it's right next to the alleyway.
And what was your address?
1140 Park.
Okay, okay.
And this isn't an alley that we vacated?
No, it's an unimproved alley.
It's a grass alley.
It's, yeah.
It's not actually a road alley, so it's a grass alley. So, I'm willing to take down the cutting of the, of the grass, you know?
Were they required to get permits when they put up the fences there?
Yeah, they're clearly on the plan of survey, the alley is sixteen feet from our property line.
But they're supposed to get the permits for that, right?
From the building, from the, from the.
Yeah, they would've supposed, I don't, I don't know if they did or not.
That's the thing, and that's supposed to put in there that they.
I'm sure at the time the fences were erected, there wasn't that high of regard for enforcing.
So, they've been up for a while?
I'm sure.
Yeah. And it's two different neighbors that have fences that come and, and, and butt up to it?
Yes.
Yeah. Can you, I, I mean, the.
I mean, the, the one, the, okay, it's 1147 Landen, I think 1142, or no, 1141, and then the one next to them.
Right, so your, your two houses in from the corner, so it's the house on the right and, and then the house up, at 12th Street.
Yes.
Yeah.
Where the second house is?
Right, on 12th.
Yeah.
Can you?
I, I ran away for looking those streets in that alley, Mr., I appreciate that.
I'm sure, our, Public Works did that.
Well, yeah, you initiated it.
Okay. The tree can't be accessed from the yard with, without getting into the alleyway?
Yeah. Well, it could be with, with the lift, but I don't wanna tear up my yard, I, I care for my yard.
Sure. And can they come in from 11th Street with the lift? It's obviously much further to travel, but isn't there?
No, there's, um, see, three other fences, three other residences down north of ours on the alleyway. They're using that property as their honor of the village. So, I mean, I'm willing to have, you know, I should have it, but to use half it is our property as well.
Sure.
That's not a problem.
Yeah, we've, we've, it's a nowhere valley, it's a matter of nobody, where the rest of the country is, having the ladders.
So, it's gonna tear up all that grass, you know, when the lift goes through there, just like it was his yard, it's gonna.
Tear up the alley.
Destroy that alleyway. And that would have to be replanted, or whatever, I mean, people are not gonna want, I get up to an alleyway, but it's grass, but it'd have to be restored back to it.
And, and these unapproved alleys, in many cases, just become extensions of people's yards, from all pressures.
Just for maintenance purposes, because back when, they were trash, and for no better work.
If you, if you, if you're, if you're neighbors with the fences, because you're gonna be running the lift right through what they, what they're using is their yards, and there was.
Well, it's not, it's not their yard.
I understand it, but I, I'm just asking if you've talked to them?
No, I cannot talk to them.
Because when you.
And I don't feel I should have to do that.
Well, somebody's gonna have to do it.
So, it should be the village, because it's public property.
Okay.
Right?
I'm just trying, pointing out that, as we like to point out, that if there's damage to the side, as you would restore it, it's gonna.
Not a problem. But I just want the fences down, so I can access public property, what I need to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd ask, give me, give me till weekend to meet with Mr. Nergard and Mr. De Persio, I'll write a formal recommendation, review it with Village Council, and assess where the property lines are, what perhaps maybe there were permits given when, what kind of enforcement. They'll allow me to look at everything that needs to be looked at.
Okay.
And I'll do a formal documentation on it, and present the recommendation to the, to the village attorney and the board.
I'm not, we're all familiar with that area over there, but, you know, I was gonna come out on Thursday, when I'm in, in the village, and take a look at it. So, I'll contact you before I head out there.
Okay, great.
Alright, Doug?
Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for hearing me.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Mills, what's the address again?
1140 Park Avenue. Thank you.
Okay. On the public hearings, we move on to unfinished business, I'll start now with Trustee Whitmore.
Uh, yes, so registrations are being taken through, there's Friday, August 9th, for the 2019 Fall Ball. It is going to be $50 per player, so sign up can be done before then, or on Friday, I'm sure. They all want it done before Friday, and then we also will be having a parking rec meeting and presentation that's upcoming Monday, if anybody would like to join.
Great, thank you. Trustee McCarthy?
Um, just, I was gonna ask the chief one to give us any info on the training that took place for the last two days, I know a lot of residents asked about it, but it sounded like a really cool sort of thing, did you have anything to share about what, what happened with that?
Just, uh, training, so that we're prepared for the event of any issues at the school. Familiarization with, with the latest and greatest tactics.
How many communities did you say joined for that?
Um, I didn't get a final count, but I know there was a number, but we're having a staff meeting, and those agree, haven't really had a chance to talk to anybody about it, we're really busy at training.
Driving down the state line, there were all sorts of police, I, I mean, it had to be close to 20, that there were parked there.
Right.
No lights on or anything, but all the cars were slowing down, I think trying to look at what is going on over there, and, now, a couple of which give friendly waves, which to me was an indication of, there's, there's nothing to see here.
Right, a lot of it was canine related, so that's a lot of canines there, but, this gives everybody an opportunity to work together, so on the event of a big incident, at least for some, for some, for some reality, you know what I'm trying to say? With each other, so that it's not like, okay, what do we do? So, this is good for not only our community, but for all of area communities. And just again, we're trying to fire, file fire department model, learning to cooperate and work together, because they do it every time they call out, so we're trying to get to that point. So. Great, thank you. Trustee Hart?
Uh, a couple of things, one, congratulations, and thank you for helping to grow the Winter Harbor population, so.
Oh, anytime.
Uh, we've talked before here about the work being done for the interconnected trail system, and so there is a website for that group, so we're working on trying to connect the trails along the lakefront from Winter Harbor through Zion Beach Park, Waukegan, and North Chicago, and so the five communities are working together, but it's ConnectTheNorthernLakeshore.com is the website for that, they've created branding already, and that's kind of the anticipated future name of the trail system, it's just the Northern Lake Shore Trail, but as part of that, they're bringing out these iPad kiosks to each of the communities to set up different places, so that the community can flip through and look at the, the vision for, for the trail system, as well as give input, and then they're gonna be hosting some community open houses in the future as well, but the dates that it'll be here is gonna be kind of extended Labor Day weekends, so August 27th through September 5th, and we're gonna rotate it between Schleter Building, Village Hall, and then also down by the Marina, so that.
Can you repeat the website now?
Website is ConnectTheNorthernLakeshore.com, and if you go out on that site, you can also sign up to receive email updates as the, as the project moves along. Uh, wanna thank the Chamber for the music cheers that they hosted on Seventh Street, so we wrapped up, last Thursday was the last one. Report from them today, as they were very happy with it, as the first year, I've heard from a lot of residents who really enjoyed it, we went out to one of the weeks, and it was just kind of a, a cool vibe, and not a, they kept stressing, this isn't a concert, you know, this is just music playing while you're shopping, eating, enjoying, just being out in, in the triangle there, so, but thank you, especially Peter Rush, for helping to coordinate, pull that together, we hope to be a, a host site for many future events, including the next Farmer's Market, which is coming up this Thursday, or, uh, it's Saturday.
It's Saturday.
As well as the next pop-up Beer Garden at the lakefront, this Saturday as well, and a cruise night Thursday evening at Harbor Plaza. Uh, last thing I have is, like Greg alluded to earlier, and I'm sure you're gonna jump in on this too, is we did have a meeting with, had to be most of the IDNR that came up, but it was the new IDNR Director, along with 12 of her staff, our state rep, our state senator, their aides, and then us for, for the entire day, and then Beach Park and Zion jumped in for kind of the second half of the day, but we got close to seven hours with the DNR, and it was, the, the new director seems to be very willing to work with us, we were laughing and joking, and.
Yeah, amazing.
And she is really putting an emphasis on the, kind of, the customer experience when they come through, and seeing the erosion, and the way that some of the, the condition of things reflects not only on us as a community, the state park, but on, on the state as a whole, she seemed to take very personally, and so we, we talked about beach maintenance and needs there, we talked about erosion and, and issues there, we talked about the hotels, and our desire to see that go up to bid, and, and I will say, a lot of times when we talk about wanting to do more events on the lakefront, or, or even hear that word development, immediately, especially, like, we had, one of the guys who was there was clearly a biologist, right, and, and so immediately when we start development, it was sort of the, whoa, what, you know, are you trying to put Navy tier here, you know, what's the vision? I think by the end of the day, we all realized, we're, we're trying to achieve the same thing. We, we want a really well-managed park, that is this incredible ecosystem, that, to, to attract the, the plants and birds that live in very few other places in the world, but we also want people to have a nice place to stay when they, when they come here, and restaurants to eat at, so, they kept using the phrase, phrase of complementary development, right, we love things that complement the state park, not try and overpower, overshadow, or, or overdevelop the, the natural setting that, that we have there, so, toured, looked at a number of different spots, some of it was giving history for the new director, some of it was sharing the vision for what we wanna see in the future, it was also incredibly encouraging to see that they have a plan for the erosion, now, having a plan and having funding, it can be two different things, but they were able to show their, their plan for putting a, a series of islands down the, down the lakefront here to, to block, stop the erosion, but still keep a natural look, as opposed to just putting a giant break wall there, so they started receiving some funding to get that project going, there was a drone flying around while we were down there, doing some daily scans to, to monitor the erosion, but overall, it was, you know, a really great day, and, you know, thank you Greg for helping to coordinate that, and get them, get that whole group up there. I think we were anticipating, or hoping to get the director here, when she brought the whole team, you know, I think it really made for a positive day, so they were all on the same page, there were a number of asks that we kept making, and we had the people there to be able to say, is that even possible, and, and get the ball rolling.
It would've been nice to be able to send them, have the whole board there, so.
Yeah.
We could.
Yeah, we could.
Immediately.
Well, the other thing was, they, they had gotten everybody there, so, the numbers were short, so.
Yeah, our, we ran out of room in the shuttle bus to, we have so many people, so some had to follow along, but, you know, it was a really great day, and optimistic what this is gonna lead to.
Take my unfinished business, but.
All right, good meeting.
Thank you. Trustee Hargit. Trustee Weiss?
I have nothing but thank you Greg, and Mayor, and Buddy for that report, as filings are getting on the map, and after so many years of struggling and fighting to get to this point, it's, it's really great to see that, and Greg, you've been magnificent in giving us a ton of information that we've never received before, and that's what I really appreciate, thank you.
And money too.
Money too.
Absolutely. Thank you. Trustee Weiss. Trustee Levin?
I'll turn over to Justin, do you have anything you would have to say?
Um, I don't have anything, I, there, I am a couple months behind in providing some of the data to you guys, and that's because our new computer reporting system's proving a little bit difficult to pull some data from, but within this next month, I'll have that cleaned up, and I'll have all kinds of updates retrieved, next month.
Thank you.
And then, all I can just add is, our whole fire inspector, the group member, Mr. Ray, so if you keep this down, we'll, we'll.
Thank you. Trustee Mayor Bella?
So, can you give us a little update here on what we've been doing, I, I obviously see, the roadworks are in progress, he has a nice spreadsheet that he gave to all of you people, and it's also on our website, but, so he distributed the progress report, he's under budget, well, we are under budget, in the road project, so he's gonna do more patchings, and approximately about 900 square yards of tree patching will be completed on the areas that they deem are the worst, so he's, we have a, a list of what's what, so he knows what's going on with that. So, the APWA Lake County Beaning 100 Food Drive, which was supposed to go to a certain place, he designated that it was going to our, the church out here, who just made a new food pantry, and that's about completed, there's a hundred fifty, over 150 pounds of food that they collected, just, which is, which is great. Just a note on that, the reason that project was held up was because Menards ran out of the material, that's what took so long, so John Ritter was waiting on that, he finally got it, so that looks like it's in a good state.
Yeah.
Um, did culvert installation project, he did all five culverts installed, he's a Public Works stat, saving approximately $20,000 in labor costs, so, another plus we get by performing our own maintenance stuff, and annual fire hydrant flushing is scheduled for early September. I think the road project's looking really good, and people are pleased that we're doing things, like, we're gonna look into more things, as you've discussed, to try to come up with a better comprehensive plan to attack some of those roads.
Well, this is the most we've put in the road since 2006.
Correct.
Yeah. And with the.
Now, we're.
Two hundred and something thousand dollars, you know, we only put MFT money into it for next year, you know, or for this year's budget, for next year's work, you know, this extra $200,000, it puts it in a, you know, you're back up to a half million dollars, you know, so hopefully next year, we'll see the same, same type of project.
Right.
So, all the patches, it's kind of varied, Monroe's getting some, Roberts Road's getting quite a bit, Fifth Street, Seventh Street, it's all over.
All hands to the brat.
There's, there's obviously more than what money we have, but it really kind of played out nice and sure, it's a good, it's a good project.
Basically, a good job, too. And it looks nice, if you look at what they're doing.
Can I get one of those charts?
Yes.
Was it on your mailbox?
I did not, yes, but I, and read luck again, that doesn't mean.
I got it very well, just.
Yeah, I kind of like this stuff, I really like this.
Yes, I have the updated one here.
Thank you. Norrie?
Yeah, that's about it, I mean, that's, summer's coming to an end, unfortunately, but, I attended the, down at the marina, so, that was awesome, there was a lot of people, the chief was down there, they were parked all the way out to the road to go out.
Venetian night?
Yeah, it was amazing, it was a perfect night, went down with no problems, which is awesome, handled the traffic, which traffic was crazy, but you gotta expect it, there's one way in, one way out, but.
There's the group during the day, in addition to kind of the festivities there, there's a group offering free paddling lessons, and so you could, kids could kayak in the marina, where it's nicely protected, calm water, and we did that, it was a nice steady line of people getting in the water for that season.
I was on a ton, so, that's good, but, how many times you get dunked?
Uh, I think ten.
How many do you run your dog?
Uh.
Thank you.
I'm not really about to dunk you, but, the ranking.
I'd like to congratulate Trustee Whitmore on the new residence, so.
Thank you.
And, uh, thank Greg once again for all that you do for the village, to the village administrative position, and thank Trustee Hargit for saying everything I was gonna say in the meeting. That meeting on July 26th with the director, the IDNR, was truly amazing, and showing my, my thank yous are going out this week. That's all I have, the next item on here is, so it's call session, we, we put this on the agenda, just so we have it on here, it's gonna be on here at every, every meeting, just in case we have to go in the call session, we do not have to this evening, so, I'm just letting you know, that's why it's on there, in case you do, so, the next item. All right, Rockoff?
Hargit?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Mayor Bella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
And Whitmore? Aye.